I would like to remind everybody that, uh... Please speak a little louder, or I lost one of my hearing aids this morning while plowing. About $4,000 worth. Put their in here. So I don't know when it's coming. Do I hear motion to adopt the agenda?
Is there any chance we move, uh... Just public comment to the end of the agenda so we can deal with anything else?
Move what?
Public comment to the end of the agenda. I know there'll be some, so I just want to see if that's okay with everybody else.
I don't have a problem.
So I make a motion to approve the, uh...agenda, uh...moving, uh...item four. I'm not sure what we're doing. It's like on four.
Sorry, that was my fault. I can't.
What do you want to move?
This is like your journey. It's rather difficult.
Okay. Do we have a public agenda?
After old business. Mayor Council.
I made that motion with all.
I'll say.
Now, do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda with the change?
You want to vote?
He raised the motion to adopt it.
Let's vote on it.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Okay, now you got me messed up here.
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda? Alright, here motion on the consent agenda.
I move we approve the consent agenda as presented. A second.
Vote in favor?
Aye.
It's closed. Excuse me, ma'am, I'm adjusting my hearing. Remove down the guest speaker's communication. Well, that's not public comments.
Yeah.
Okay, turn down. We'll move on over to new business.
Well, was this going to hand out? Sorry. That should be really familiar.
Uh, yeah. Jessica, you wanna...you guys gotta hand me out to explain this a little bit to...
Yeah, but it's just a, um...letter from Travel Southern Oregon. Their feedback from the last meeting that they attended. When Bob was here at the last meeting, he wanted to, um...basically be on the record giving you guys advising on some of the things that he, um...feels that's important for the advisory committee, for the TLT tax, and also for the council. He strongly suggests that someone or many go to the governor's conference, which is in April. You can use the TLT tax to attend that. Um, I double-checked on that and triple-checked, actually. You can use that to go, so that can pay for your whole conference and your hotel. So, he strongly suggests that many of you go, so that you can have a better understanding on tourism and how it relates to the ordinance and the law.
Anybody that's interested, you want to let Roberta know, so she can get everything booked?
It does fill up really fast.
Yeah.
It books really fast, so, um...Roberta, I think, saved a spot already for whoever can go.
Okay. Thank you. Let's move down to the new business. Bullet flood retention structure. So we got our reports back on that. Um, the only thing I see here that needs to, uh...really address is the structure. Apparently, what they're saying, unusual...unusual amount of concrete deterioration from what appears to be a combination of freeze damage, also possible alkali reactive added, uh...use for the concrete. There's nothing that suggests the dam is not stable and deterioration is not progressing quickly. So I'm not sure just what they...pictures in there. What suggestions are, maybe we could get the engineer to go up and look at it and see what he thinks.
I know that he has been up there, Daryl's been up there, and Jeff's aware that we had a report last year, but I just think it's important that the council kind of know that this is, you know, what we're doing and what is taking place and kind of stay on that, so that it doesn't fall through any cracks.
Yes, that was a little bit too far, I guess.
Yep.
Okay. Let's move down to B. Maria, Lake County Chamber of Irish Days.
Hi, uh...good afternoon or evening, um...Mayor Turner and distinguished council members. Uh, as it is tradition, Irish Days is, uh...coming along real quick. Uh, so we're, uh...requesting for the roads to be closed for the parade. Um, this would take place on March 16th. Uh, the closure times would be at 11:00 AM, starting at 11, uh...closing until 3:00 PM. Um, the permits, uh...were signed by Sheriff Taylor and, uh...we have the insurance, um...taking care of through the Adley office. I don't really know their...
Is that the same as usual?
Yes, everything will stay the same.
Stay in contact with the sheriff on all of this and provide maps, please.
Mm-hmm. Um, I have a copy, I should've gave you guys this, I guess.
You can give me a copy tomorrow.
It's that way, it's just right there. All of it is included.
Okay.
Alright, thank you, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh...Jessica, Lake County Chamber of Bike Funds.
Yep, so you guys should have a packet that I turned in to Roberta. And our...this is a subcommittee of the Rural Tourism Studio, uh...that happened in last April through Town of Oregon, and Western Heritage has separated into three subcommittees to get more things achieved through the year. We are asking for some bike funds to put up two hitching posts, um...maybe bike racks. They'd match our town branding. They would be done locally by Adam Albertson, he's given us a quote, um...which should be in there, and also some pictures. Um, they'd be...one would be put up at the pool, the other one we put downtown. We would come to you later to get the exact places that we want, um...approved, but we would like to get started. Um, he can start doing these in early spring, hopefully, if it ever stops snowing. Then, um...but they are all made out of concrete made to look like wood. The concrete will be, um...dyed, so there won't be much upkeep. Um, it'll be pretty far in before we have to start addressing any kind of maintenance, so they should be pretty self-sufficient. And, um, they have this type of bike rack in Primeville, which is where we found it. It's really on track with our, um...pick-your-boots-off-and-stay-while Western Experience Lakeview Town, and we'd have the word "Lakeview" put in there permanently. So we think this would be a great addition and a good use of the bike funds.
I think they're cool.
They're pretty neat. They should be able to fit about four bikes on them, depending on the size. They'll be a lot more secure and, um...just really neat to look at as well. So visually pleasing and they'll provide function.
You're asking for 51.50?
Yes, that would be the price of two. We'd be able to put two in this year. Yeah.
Do I hear a motion on the 51.50 for the bike racks? Out of the...is the Lake County Chamber of...
So we're saying this is coming straight out of the bike fund?
The 1% that goes into, you know, that comes out of our state tax, uh...the highway tax, we have to set aside that 1% for bicycle pedestrian, um...indemnities for that.
Do you know what our budget is in there now?
I think last year we had 27.
Well, the whole, yeah, bike racks and trails, it's that much, it's 25. But the bike racks fund is 5,000, so.
Can I elaborate on it? Do I hear a motion?
I would move we approve the bike rack installation in the amount of 5,125 dollars.
Fifty?
They were only 50 dollars, as requested by Chamber of...
A second.
Motion taken, second, votes in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. Old business, little league.
Do you want to have a countdown of results? So, yes. Let me give you an update, so...sorry, I have a...um...uh...we have a contract that we've worked on. Uh, Lily needs to bring it to their board and see what their thoughts and input, and it's found illegal to add some legal information there, and then we should have it back by our next meeting, and we can probably be able to move forward with that.
Alright, listen here. Ladies on assignments? Okay, Sammy, you have the police now.
This isn't the one that Darwin put together for us. This is the old one.
That's the old one. This is what we had last year. You should have a link in behind that, so you guys could write in what you want.
I thought we were gonna break these all out. I thought we were gonna break these out into groups, whole groups.
Which Darwin did do, and I can...be great. Very small.
Well, I would, you know, instead of doing it here, I would just, um...maybe do a work session and do it, if we've got a little more time for everything.
If we have time tomorrow, maybe?
Well, I don't think we'll have time tomorrow, but next, uh...Tuesday, right, we meet again? Give it over gold. So can we just add this to that? So I motion that we, uh...take ours until Tuesday.
Okay.
A second. Can...can...do you type in or write bigger?
Yeah, you write it, or old people can read it.
Yeah, or would you like me to?
Do I need to be done?
Yeah.
Okay. Next one there is Lake County Chamber of Contract?
Um, we're actually gonna be dealing with that tomorrow.
Okay.
We have a meeting tomorrow at 3 o'clock?
Yes, 3 o'clock work session followed by 4 o'clock. They'll be all drafted, so pretty good, so.
Yeah, we just gotta clean up the contract. Um, it looks like Sheriff Taylor and the committee are, uh...we're right there. So I think that we want all the contract, uh...so we'll be going over all the final details and everything on that.
And we'll be tailings.
Well, we gotta get...we gotta move on with that, okay. Let's move on down to, you know, the mayor council updates. The only thing I have is, um...I know the city work crew have been working their tailings off out there, and, uh...you can, if somebody's got vehicles on the streets or they happen to...if they know they're gonna be uptown and unable to drive home, if they were just parked in the city parking lot, try to keep the streets as clear as possible to make it easier for everybody, for these guys to plow. Um, I know that sometimes they've been coming in at midnight, working from 1:00, and another crew comes in a little bit later, they're not all on at the same time. And also, um...be aware that we do have three contractors working. They two are going as fast as they can, so we just need to be patient. If your driveway's not cleaned out, um...they're trying, because the last time I didn't get mine cleaned out till the afternoon, but I wasn't worried, I'd already taken my four-wheeler and plowed everything up there. It doesn't mean trouble.
Also, uh...make sure that, uh...your fire hydrants are kept clear, too.
Yeah.
So that the fire engine can get in there if necessary.
Yeah, if you're plowing your own snow. The other thing is, don't plow across the road to the other side. We do have city ordinance on that.
So I was kind of curious, Ray, 'cause I noticed it, oh, right there across from us. Um, do they not have to keep the alleys open for fire?
I think they can have it in there because of that, but, uh...the guys won't move it tonight. Oh, but, yeah.
They do plow the alleys.
Yeah.
They plowed mine yesterday, but, you know, usually when they get the other roads done, they plow the alleys.
Yeah, okay. I was just curious, I thought, ooh.
I'm sure they'll have a discussion.
If that catches on fire on the backside, we're in trouble.
Also, I got a phone call this morning, if anybody's living has the alley access in their backyard, tree breaks or whatever, it's, uh...homeowner's responsibility to clean it up. So...I checked with Public Works on that this morning.
I may have gotten a call from my neighborhood, because one fellow, and my husband cleaned up that it was our neighbor's tree, so.
It was really wet. Okay, anybody have anything else?
Mayor, could I bring something up here real quick while you're talking about, uh...trees being down and such? Um, we're...we're getting a lot of power lines down and a lot of telephone lines down, so I would caution everybody, please, if you see a line down, do not touch it. People are going out there and grabbing it, trying to move it. Uh, if you do do that, that may be the last thing you ever touch. Uh, just...and I can't emphasize this enough, please, stay away from it, call your utilities or police, fire department, and keep your animals, children, and whoever away from it, okay? We'll turn the power off and try to get that thing squared away, but please do not go there and touch those lines that are down.
Alright, now we move down to public comments. Okay, you may adjust the council. Um, just...on items on the agenda or not on the agenda, out of respect to council and others in attendance, please limit your comments to three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record, for the recorder.
Okay, Mike? Mike Warren, 613 South G Street here in Lakeview, and I am sure you're wondering what hats you were in today and what causes you to talk about it. I'll tell you that it is about an organization, a blegeling organization here in our community that has brought a lot of good times to the community over and over. And so I wanted to come here to invite you to a special occasion and also to let you know that the organization I'm speaking of does need community support, so I'm asking you, Mayor Turner, and honorable council, to kind of rally behind the Lake Arts Council, which we've had some of our members who have actually taken their last breaths, helping the community, bringing entertainment. So I just want to say that a couple of guys who've come here and have made several visits to Lakeview because of the great place that it is and knowing the great heritage they have as far as the Irish heritage. James Kiper and Don McGonagall, an Irishman and a Scotsman, asked if they could come back and do a show right before the St. Patrick's Day festivities. And I'm sorry I haven't notified the chamber, but it all came about here for a reason, so I just wanted to come to ask for the community's support of the Lake Arts Council, who has seen a lot of our members and still sees a lot of our members working very hard. One of them, Ellie Berry, told me the other day, "I've been involved in this since 1980. Maybe it's time to turn it over." And so, you know, I just asked for community's support, it...the Arts Council has arrived and has brought many a great entertainment bringing to our community. And so on March the 13th, the week of the St. Patrick's Day activities, on Wednesday evening, there will be a minimal concert, and I invite everyone out. Thank you for...
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Say thank you.
Okay.
I have a question, where is the concert?
It is to be at the First Presbyterian Church, and at the time, 6:30 or 7:00, it's still to be decided with these guys, but they're coming in and...if you don't mind, I'll take another minute to point out one of the great things I see with the Arts Council that they bring to our communities, the outreach in our public schools. And our youth of our community, they really don't have entertainment or musical... I mean, they're trying to revive the program, and I give them a large pat on the back, but it's hard to...to bring to this smaller community the kind of venues that we've been able to do. And one of the things that these guys want to do for sure, and what we try to always make sure if the Arts Council is, it is an outreach to the public schools, and so they are gonna be making performance that day, too, so.
What, what, did you say it was a band, or?
Uh, men of work, they actually tour Ireland, Scotland, one of them is from Scotland, one is from Ireland, and they've been here many times, uh...they love Lakeview because of the Irish heritage. And they are great musicians, great artists, and I think that everyone would enjoy it. If you've had an opportunity to come up, I think you would enjoy it very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Take it to a long cell, real soon.
Um, Mike, oh, my bad. Um, my name is Kaylee Campbell, I live at 439 South F Street here in Lakeview. I am reading this on behalf of Craig Compton with the Forty, or the High Desert Flower, um...company. I am not...I'm just representing and reading this letter. Any questions or anything that goes with it needs to be directed towards him. Um, Ms. Taylor, my name is Craig Compton, I am the general manager of High Desert Flower. I was made aware of an incident that occurred this past weekend in a local bar. I was informed that you were making defamatory remarks about our employees and our business. I wanted to inform you that I will be requesting slash seeking your resignation slash dismissal from city council. If that does not happen, we will seek legal action against you personally and as a city council member for slander and defamation. The actions and words that I was told that you used are both ignorant and inappropriate and unacceptable for anyone, let alone a representative of the town. Please let it be known that you do not represent me. You are obviously not in control when out in public representing yourself as a city councilwoman. I will request the video from the bar be obtained and addressed at the next city council meeting, or I will request that you repeat what you said in front of the entire town. Additionally, my stepson is Austin Webb. I was told that you drove him home in a drunken condition. If I am ever made aware of this happening again, I will call the police or sheriff, and I don't care how connected you think you are. I will make sure your bad decisions are brought to light and dealt with on a legal level. Signed, Craig Compton, 21919.
Uh, my name is Travis Riddle, uh...Chutel on Southeast Street, Lakeview is my address. I'm here...I was born and raised in Lakeview, and I've never been to a county council meeting, I've never had any reason for them, and, uh...basically, I am here for this one reason, uh...to address the situation with Ms. Taylor, as most people in Lakeview, and I am sure, since it's a small town, afford all kinds of wonderful things regarding the situation. I, first of all, don't come here as a big fan, I'm not coming here to say my political part. I'm here to tell you that I, uh...I do not actually know Ms. Taylor personally. I've never met her, um...or engaged and talked to her, except for two times that I can remember, which were at the Eagles' ass bar. Last Friday, I got done working in Fort Rock, and I got into the bar at about 5:00, or at about midnight. I had driven from Fort Rock that evening, and basically, what I had done was brought all of my gear over to the Eagles' ass, so that I could load it, um...as I was gonna play the next evening. And, uh...the bar was pretty empty, uh...but in the back of the bar was Ms. Taylor and a small group of people, including her husband and, uh...a few, um...out-of-town people. And as I was sitting at the far end of the bar, Ms. Taylor basically approached me and asked me why I did not want to be her friend on Facebook anymore. And the reason that I gave her is because I do not believe that I agree with her political views. I don't agree with the stuff that she was writing on there, and I simply don't have to be her friend. It's just that simple. There was nothing more to it. Uh, I explained to her that I did not want to associate with things I do not believe in, and I took her post very personally, and she explained to me. She also had a very personal reason for writing the post. And from that point out, she had asked me why I'm not in front of her husband Drew, who I actually don't know personally that well at all, but he's always been very nice and kind to me. And I've engaged with many of the same friends and the same social circles as him. Um, at this point, she explained to me that she thought it was silly that we couldn't be friends and wanted to address the fact that we should be able to get along, even though we have separate views and opinions. And I was basically very blunt with her, and she did not respond to that very well. I was blunt with her and told her I did not see that as a good situation, did not care to go down that road. Um, she asked me if I did not want to be friends with people that I didn't agree with, that I have the same views on, and I said, "Not tonight." At that point, she began to call me a bigot and an narcissist and explained that I was a stupid stoner. And I...I am a stoner, I smoke marijuana regularly, I have no shame in that, just like a person would go to a bar, and it's illegal. And basically, she had told me that this had really hurt her heart and was sobbing, and told me that all of us liberals were the same. And at that point, um...I was not entertaining her, so I think that she found that she was beating a dead horse, so she had left the bar. Well, moments later, her and her husband had came back into the bar, and Ms. Taylor had directly stood her husband in front of me, and she told me to repeat what I had said to her husband, all of the things that I had said to her. And she, uh...began to tell me that I was a, uh...I actually don't think I can use vulgar words.
Travis, how long are you up here? You got much longer to go?
Uh, no, not much, okay. So basically, what had happened was that she, uh...started going on, calling me vulgar names, and explaining to me how I was a loser for living in the back of my parents' house after reliving 23 last year. And basically, at that point, um...two gentlemen had got up and started to become physical with her and her husband, and asked them to leave the bar, when bartender also came around, asked Ms. Taylor and her husband to leave the bar. And she was yelling profanities at me for leaving the bar, and basically, at that point, they got in their car and had drove home intoxicated. The reason that I'm here today is because I had two options. I had an option to file a report with the Oregon State Police and to make sure that Ms. Taylor was prosecuted. When she left the bar, she explained to me that she was on city council and told me that she had been voted there and that I was basically, you know, not as, um...important to this town as that she was. She also said that she had Mike Taylor's name in her back pocket on speed dial, in which I talked to Mr. Taylor, who was our little sheriff, on Tuesday, and he informed me that that is one, not the case, that he does not represent any one person in this town, but as well, that that is abusive power. And so the reason that I am here today, basically, is to make the situation acknowledged because of the fact that I don't think that anybody in any position of power should ever abuse the power or say that they're on the Lakeview Town Council, or abuse the sheriff's name. As well, as I'm here to say, that my mother is sitting here in the crowd, who's lived in Lakeview for many, many years, my father is out plowing the roads right now. These are very wonderful people, they're not liberals, and they're not users. I'm not a user for living with them, regardless of their opinion or political differences. So that is all I basically have to say. I've contacted the Secretary of State regarding the violation of regulation of ethics, as well as have the option still to seek legal action against you. So, basically, where I'm at is I'm asking for Ms. Taylor to do the proper thing and to resign. It would be the best situation for the town of Lakeview, until you feel like you're fit to be in a public place or present yourself publicly and not abuse the town's power and name. and not abuse the town's power and name, that would be my request because I think that's fair to Lakeview and everybody else in the town. So that's all I have for you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else?
Hello, thanks for having me today. Um, my letter might extend a little bit, if that's okay. Um, so I wrote this all out because it's a bit kinda tough for me to just come up here. Right, so, uh, my name is Viviana, sorry, I'm a little bit nervous. My name is Viviana Reynolds, I live at three twenty-seven Southeast. Um, most of you know me, a lot of you have, um, met with me before. I own a business in this town, so I'm just gonna go ahead and read off of my letter. Hello, my name is Viviana Reynolds. Most of you know me as I have lived in Lake County for over twenty-three years. You may also know me because I own a business in town. I continuously strive to involve myself in the community, and I have a long history of wonderful relationships with many Lake County residents. I am here today to ask for the resignation of Nikki Taylor from her position on town council. It is very unlikely to be involved in what I consider unnecessary drama, but this is unlike any situation that could be placed under that classification. I am not here to encourage the bullying of Mrs. Taylor or to encourage anyone to change their minds about what they think of her as a human being. I am simply here to share the experiences that have led me to be present today. In two, twenty seventeen, I had one of the worst experiences of my life since living in Lake County since the year nineteen ninety-six. I am a recipient of a program that allows me to work in this country and reside here legally. As I know the political stance of the majority of this county, I remain unaffected because I firmly believe we can all have different opinions and still coexist peacefully. My ideas, morals, and values do not encourage me to belittle others or bully them. I am saying this because of the hands of Mrs. Taylor, I endured a week of anguish and bullying from adults in Lake County. To be very frank, I am a bit fearful about what my presence here today may cause, but I will no longer be silenced. In twenty seventeen, I had a very real scare due to the program I benefit from being potentially removed for good. This program allows me to continue to raise my two American children and help our local business thrive. I shared my fear for the termination of this program on my personal Facebook page. I cannot stress enough the fact that this was on my personal page. Personal meaning private, where we can exercise our right to freedom of speech. My status was a bit extreme, I will admit, but not enough to endure what I faced after this. After I published my opinion, I had gone to use the restroom at my office only to come back to a voicemail from Mrs. Taylor. In the voicemail, she asked me to please return her call promptly, so I did. I was eager to speak to her as she was someone I considered a friend. I'd actually spoken to her just the weekend prior at one of our local bars. We talked about her buying a car for her daughter. I, however, was greeted with anger. She told me she took my post very personally and that she wouldn't do business with us again. I apologized and told her I had never intended to attack her personally. I was just scared for my life and my kids' lives. As you can well imagine, my personal life does not revolve in the least around Mrs. Taylor, so I did not think that it would escalate to the extreme it did. Many of you are probably thinking that a bad interaction with her is not by any means reason enough to be here today. But unbeknownst to me, my problems were just beginning. After my encounter with her and my apology, it was not known to me that she had screenshotted my post and distributed it amongst members of this community, which she knew would engage in further bullying me. In addition to that, she had also very publicly posted about her disdain for our company. My personal Facebook page is not a reflec, a reflection of our company values whatsoever. I am as entitled to a life outside of my business as anyone else, including Mrs. Taylor. I would also like to mention that I immediately removed what I had shared because I did realize that it had been in poor taste on my behalf due to my position in our community. For days following, I had numerous people come into my office to continue to belittle me. In many cases, I was told to leave this country, that the program that I benefited from was an abomination, and I was also accused of being a thief. At this point in time, I had worked at my local business for over five years. Of those five years, I had provided customer service to the very people that went out of their way to continue to execute Mrs. Taylor's plan. In total, we lost over five families due to her need to bully me, a fellow community member. I honestly continuously asked myself why. When I saw that she was running for a position in the county, I cried. I wept because I wondered how many other people may suffer at the hands of someone who not holds a position of importance in this community. I wondered how many more people would be silenced because a different opinion was not welcome. I felt compelled to come speak because though this occurred over a year ago, Mrs. Taylor continued to feel whatever her personal issue with me is. As many of you know, I am very familiar with the internet and how it works. Therefore, I am very familiar with how social media works. If anyone in this room has Facebook, you may know of a place where suggested friends are listed. This list is quite literally a list of people who have recently looked at your profile. Now, this may sound irrelevant, but it isn't. Mrs. Taylor appears on, as the first suggested friend on all of my family and friends' lists, so much so that many of them have opted to block her. The only reason I felt compelled to include this is because Mrs. Taylor made a new profile as a town council member. This was a new profile, so of course I did not have any association with it, therefore it was not blocked. Well, sure enough, she was the first person to pop up on my suggested friends with her profile that was associated with her position as town council member. I recently shared my experience on the one-year anniversary of these things happening, omitting Mrs. Taylor's name on my personal Facebook page. I had an overwhelming amount of support and encouragement from many community members, many of which probably agree with Mrs. Taylor's political opinions. I had an overwhelming amount of messages from fellow Hispanic community members as well, who thanked me for being a voice for them, for being brave for them. I am here to implore you to remove Mrs. Taylor from her position because this town needs leadership that is inclusive and understanding, regardless of difference of opinion. I am not here to-
Are you getting close to the end because you're two minutes over the ladies?
Okay, well, yeah, I'm getting close to that, I'm almost done. I'm on the last paragraph. I am not here to convince anyone to think the way I do in regards to politics whatsoever. What I'm here to encourage people to do is to stop using your beliefs as a means to bully people. If you believe what you believe, that is wonderful. But if you use those beliefs to hurt people, maybe you should reconsider your angle. Reconsider what battles, battles are worth engaging in. For the longest time, I was silent. I did not think this was a battle worth fighting. For the longest time, Mrs. Taylor achieved exactly what she hoped to achieve, making me strong. While I stand tall and proud in front of all of you today because I have lived in Lake County for over twenty years, I have seen buildings torn down, buildings built up. I have worked for my father, who many of you know, to help those in need in this community. I'm a twenty-six-year-old woman who owns a local business, who is friendly to everyone but who loves her family above all. I ask you today to please consider what I'm asking, not as much for me, but for the future we are building for our children. I have two young boys, Zane and Eli. These two kids had to watch me cry from a week of bullying I did, I endured for Mrs. Taylor. Zane was three and a half and Eli was two. I cannot tell you the pain I had to swallow trying to explain to my babies that I was okay, even though my face was drenched in tears. My hope is that anyone in here who has children can empathize with that. I hope above, above all, that Mrs. Taylor can, as I know she has children of her own. I ask that she picture that in my shoes, being put down and belittled for the first time in the twenty-three years I have lived here. I ask that she imagine having to hold one of her children and tell them it will be okay the way my mother had to for her grown daughter as a result of Mrs. Taylor's actions. I ask that she imagine her children watching her cry because she had no choice in where she was born and what race she was born into. I ask that she imagine her children watching her weep, a mother who's supposed to be their strength, their protection, and their love. Thank you for listening to me today, God bless.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Or might as well say something? Hi, Lily Taylor, one eight nine oh six Roberto Road, with my mom. Um, I, I'm her daughter, the one who you also threatened, just so you know. Let's hear both sides of the story, please. We, I mean, we heard one. Uh, I think that bar drama is he said, she said. I think that I've heard so many things, I've heard attacks on me. I've heard rumors about me trying to belittle my own mom, which obviously I'm not, not unbiased, but it's definitely a two-sided story and I think that we both need to hear both sides of that. I know that my mom's not one to engage in drama, that's where I got it from. But it's a two-sided story. Lots of he said, she said.
Keep clicking.
I also was born in Lakeview. My name's Andrew Taylor, the second. A lot of you know my parents, my grandparents. I love this community. I also live at eighteen nine oh six Roberto Road. Like Travis said, I've been friends with Travis for quite a few years. I also wanna give the other side of that incident. We're sorry that incident ever happened. I'm sure he is as well. But to get started, like he said, my wife approached him over a Facebook post where he chose to unfriend her. All that stuff is correct. But it got a little more derogatory comments made towards my wife. He was also guilty in that part. He, uh, you know, called everybody, had the same beliefs as her evil. I believe there's some derogatory terms used as well. That my wife definitely is not. I'll just get it out there, her father was a gay man, so she is far from homophobic. But that was thrown her way. Um, it got to where it made her start to cry, which then she was ridiculed for that, where he questioned her mental state and stability. Being married only for five years now, I know there's certain things you don't question for women when they're worked up, and that's one of them. She ended up, eventually, I guess it got a little physical. I wasn't in her when that happened. I know it did. I do not blame her for slapping Travis, I really don't. She regrets it, I don't. I just know if I talked to a woman the way she says she did to her, and my parents saw that, they would have probably at least slapped me. And then the stuff beyond that, there's a lot of accusations going on around her slandering people and slandering a certain business, and I know that's not true. She does not slander people. She does not have it out against that certain business. She knows several people who work there, who she's got a good relationship with. So that's far from the truth. That is, it's not, not the case. Like Lily said, it's something that happened in the bar, yeah, there was alcohol involved. But I'll tell you, she was not over the limit, so when we left, she had three or four drinks over about six hours up in that bar. So to start throwing that around just 'cause she left driving and she'd been in the bar having a few drinks doesn't mean she drove someone home in a drunken state. She does not drink and drive. I don't anymore. I've been in trouble for it before, I learned my lesson. With that being said, in the grand scheme of things, I know Travis is doing what this one he wants to try to do. But it was an ugly incident, happened at a bar, it was a disagreement. Some words got said, someone got slapped, and I think her probably got hurt. And that's what it is. Going in on Viviana's stuff, that was from two thousand seventeen, I remember that post and it offended me. All we did was in our service with you. She did not make the decision for other people that could do anything. She is not a racist, I can guarantee you that. That's it, all I got.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything?
I would like to just add one thing as far as the accusations to that incident. As well as Mr. Taylor knows, he's probably the only person in this situation that does know this because Mr. Taylor and I are the only two people that have viewed the bar tape that are in this room today. That bar tape actually does show you being in the physical altercation, so I just wanna get that out there.
Andrew, Andrew, Andrew.
As far as that goes, on anything else, I did not ask Ms. Taylor to approach me. She was sobbing uncontrollably, and I did question her mental state because I did not understand why someone would come up to me and start talking to me like this. Um, I did also make it very clear that I did not want to speak with her, as well as, um, that we did not have personal agreeances on our opinions. And that is okay for me to do as a person in a community. It is okay for somebody to express that. The reason I am here today is 'cause I do not represent the town of Lakeview like Ms. Taylor does. I don't do anything in the bars but play music. That's what I do at the bars. I do that for entertainment, it's my job, I'm employed by a lot of the bars around here. So as far as that goes, I actually was not the person to also accuse Ms. Taylor of driving intoxicated. The young gentleman that was with her was the one who started it. I needed to ask you to stop. No, you had your point.
Thank you. Anybody else? Here none. We'll work during regular session at four forty-three.